Oops. Good evening. Is that on? Okay, there we go. Good evening, everyone. We'll go ahead and call the City Council meeting for March 6, 2009 to order. First thing as always is a roll call and determination of quorum. Amber, if you would, please.
Quaker?
Here.
Olson?
Here.
Kroger?
Here.
Costello?
Here.
Haddock?
Here.
Martinson?
Here.
Wyffenbach?
Here.
Ocrepke? Chapman? We have a quorum.
Thank you, everyone. Just a reminder, if you have a cellphone or a pager, if you could please turn that off, or to the vibrate mode, or the self-destruct mode, whatever you choose, we'd appreciate it. Just a reminder, if your cellphone does go off and we hear it, you buy donuts for everyone after the meeting, so. Let's see here. Also, if you wish to speak to any issue on the agenda, we do have speaker request forms that are over on the media table to my right, to your left. If you could fill that out and include the item number, the agenda item number, that'll help make sure that we don't overlook you as we make our way down the agenda. And you can turn that into Amber on the end there. Wave Amber. Yep, she's our Vanna. So you just turn them into her and we'll make sure that we acknowledge you as we work our way down. Next thing as always is our invocation, so if you'd please rise and then remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight's invocation will be given by Ron McGlaughlin from Hillsview E. Free Church.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Let's pray. Father God, we do thank you and praise you for this night. Lord, I thank you for these men and women that serve here in the city, and I thank you, Father, for the families and the communities that they represent. And God, I just pray that you'd be a part of everything here tonight. Father, we praise you for you being you, and being a provider, and sustainer, and creator of all. So, God, we just give you the glory, and we do so in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, in the name of our government, individual, liberty, and justice. Next on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Are there any items to be added to tonight's agenda by any of the council members or staff? If so, please turn on your light. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to add an item, and call it eighty-one A, regarding update on utility rebates. Utility rebates.
Okay, very good. Call that eighty-one A. Any additional items? Please turn on your light. Additional items. If not, the Chair will look for a motion to adopt the agenda as amended to include an item eighty-one A in addition. We have a motion and a second. Discussion on that motion. In discussion. Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We need to approve the minutes for the February twenty-six, two thousand nine, the March fourth, two thousand nine, and the March fifth, two thousand nine, special council meetings, and also the March second, two thousand nine, regular council meeting. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of those meetings. In discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. This is somewhat of an unusual request, but Jack Vandergeest gave an extraordinary speech to the council a couple of weeks ago, and that is memorialized in the video record. But given the situation and the extraordinary nature of what he had to say, I'm wondering if it would be possible to put a transcript of that in the record.
I'm going to look to our City Attorney, Jason. Would the appropriate way to handle this, approve the special council meetings and continue the minutes for the March second, and ask for a verbatim on that section?
That'd be perfect.
Okay. I assume that was your motion?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the February twenty-sixth, March fourth, and March fifth special council meetings, and continue the March second, two thousand nine, regular council meetings to the next council meeting, and ask staff to bring back a verbatim section when we're giving the award to Jack Vandergeest. Okay? In discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. I'm going to be going down front, and we have a couple of recognitions and awards.
It's always a pleasure to recognize veterans for their service to not only our community, to our country, and today I have the honor of recognizing another veteran. Let me read this. "In partnership with the Veterans Coordination Commission, the City of Rapid City is pleased to present the March two thousand nine Veteran of the Month recognition to LaVern Teck. Vern," as most people call him, "enlisted the United States Air Force in nineteen fifty-five and worked in radio communications. Seven years later, he went to pilot training and was commissioned as a pilot." Smart man. "Vern flew several different types of aircraft, including KC-130s and B-52s. He served three terms in Vietnam and flew B-52s at Ellsworth Air Force Base. His medals included nine air medals and the Distinguished Flying Cross. Vern belongs to several veterans organizations, including the American Legion Post Twenty-Two, where he served as the post commander, the county commander, and the area vice commander. He also served on the Board of Directors for American Legion Post Twenty-Two as president and board member. Vern was just elected the American Legionnaire of the Year for Post Twenty-Two. He's also a member of the Disabled Veterans, American Veterans Association. Vern has also held numerous local offices, as well as the state president, for the Forty and Eight. He is currently the Nurses Training Director for the State Forty and Eight, and has worked with other veterans to keep the Gorgier, okay, six fifty-eight going, and is in an effort to assist other veterans and their families. On behalf of the citizens of Rapid City and the grateful nation, Vern, thank you for your service." Say a few words there. I have this thirty-minute speech for you all. No, just a, I want to thank you very much. I appreciate this. It's a great honor. Thank you, Dave.
Let's bring your wife up, and let's take a couple pictures. Please come on up.
Chief, let's see. Oh, there he is. He's out of the uniform, that's why. I'm used to seeing him in blue. It's always a pleasure to recognize long-term employees of the City of Rapid City. And David Walton, he has reached that milestone of thirty years, so I'd like to have Chief Allen say a few words about the service that David has given to the City of Rapid City.
Thank you, Mayor. What an honor it is to recognize Dave Walton for his thirty years of service. He started in February nineteen seventy-nine with the Rapid City Police Department, and before that he had about eight years of experience when he came to us in Wyoming. So he was well-seasoned then. He's even more well-seasoned now. And this is not only the anniversary of his thirty years, but this year will also mark the year that he retires from the Rapid City Police Department, and so we're looking forward to helping him celebrate that next chapter in his life. He's one of the, one of our folks who have worked harder every year for thirty years. He's going to walk out of our front doors proud, and we're very proud to have spent his time with him. Thanks, Dave.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mayor.
Congratulations. Say a few words here.
Well, I'm not really good at giving speeches, but I want to say that it's been a, it's been a good ride, thirty years in this department. I came here, like she said, in nineteen seventy-nine. The best move I ever could have made in my whole life. I moved from a ragtag department in Wyoming, and I came into professional agency, and from the beginning of my career till now, that agency has done nothing but improve itself thirty times the fold. It is, I am very proud to have served the community and in this department, and I thank you for the opportunity to have served you. Got a couple more months left, and then we're going to have a little bit of a party.
Thank you, everyone. Next on the agenda is the public, general public comment period. This is a time for members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the council on any issue not on the agenda. Action will not be taken at tonight's meeting on any issue not on the agenda, except by placement on the agenda by the unanimous votes of the council members present. Are there any issues that are not on the agenda that anybody would like to talk about? We do not have a speaker request form as far as, I think yours is actually on the agenda, is it not? Did you find it on the agenda somewhere? Marcia, is that on the agenda? Okay. Okay, very good. Seeing no speaker request forms, we will go on to a report from Linda Anderson from the Doll Fine Arts.
I'm Mayor Hanks of the council. Good evening. I'm Darla Drew-Leridol. I'm the Assistant Director of the Rapid City Arts Council at the Doll, and we're here tonight to update you on the progress at the Doll Arts Center, and how it's going, and the usage, and such like that. I'm here tonight with President Tim Tredhart, and Executive Director Linda Anderson, and Community Engagement Director Barb Evenson. So I'm just doing the introductions. That's what I do best. So right now, here's Tim Tredhart, our Board President.
Very good. And Tim, if you just, if you could just identify yourself, I know we know each other, but some of the councilmen in the audience probably don't know who you are.
Well, I, I'm Tim Tredhart. I'm the new President of the Board here at the Doll, and my role, I think, is basically to come up here and thank all of you for all of your ongoing support for the Doll. I just started my, my term as President in January, and it's been an exciting time with the new building. So it's, it's an honor, and I want to thank all of you for your ongoing support.
Thank you, Tim. And Linda, there again, we all know who you are, but if you could identify yourself for those that are watching on TV and those in the audience.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. My name is Linda Anderson. I'm the Executive Director of the Doll Arts Center and the Rapid City Arts Council. Thank you so much for letting us come and present tonight. Boy, when Tim said it's an exciting time, it's really an exciting time. It is so much fun, after all of these years, to see people streaming through the doors and the building being used pretty much exactly how we planned. And the cool thing, you know, sometimes you have to say, be careful what you wish for. But, but in this case, it really is a great satisfaction to see the kind of uses the building is getting already. So I'm just going to go through a short presentation, and we're going to talk just a little bit about the kinds of people that are using the Doll. First of all, as I've said many times before, we have a very successful public-private partnership, and it's one that's really prudent for Rapid City taxpayers. I've heard it said by some council members even, that the Doll maybe should be looked at as a model for 2012, and I think that there are a lot of good reasons that that might be the case. The cost of the city, three million two hundred and fifty thousand, is out of the current Vision 2012 funds. Five hundred thousand for the purchase of the MDU building was out of the last round of funds. And three million five hundred thousand was raised from private and foundation donations by the Rapid City Arts Council. That's actually low. When you take into consideration the first project, and also money that we continue to raise for ongoing projects, it'll probably be more like three point eight million by the time we're finished. It was a successfully managed project. It was on time and on budget. We're really, really proud of that. I opened to the public January seventeenth, two thousand and nine, as planned, and it was well-managed. Lessons from the project, I can tell you, any 2012 project that would have the excellent construction team that we had would be bound to be a success. Rapid City Arts Council reps, Steve McCarthy and Barb Evenson, City Representative Rod Johnson, Jay Skull Construction reps, Tom Palm, Bobby Christensen, Danny Wagner, Forefront Representative Heather Kravka, Red Earth. And you know, these guys worked hours and hours, and really worked together with the mind of keeping things within budget, and that was, and also just having an excellent building. It was amazing to watch. This is a picture of the Bank West Arts Classroom. It's one of the arts classrooms. I probably should have picked one full of kids, because it usually is these days. It's a flexible, usable public building, and it's designed for many kinds of users. Arts users, of course, visual art, music, literature, dance, and theater. Community users, community groups, service clubs, for-profit, nonprofit, television, film, radio media, political groups, city departments, state departments, the Native American community, and of course, underserved. We really have an emphasis on making sure that we serve people of all income levels, children, seniors, people with disabilities. Support for the community. It's so much more than an arts center. It's a community center. Education, student, teachers, schools, colleges, technical schools, all use the Doll. Residents of Rapid City and the surrounding region. We are the largest community arts center in western South Dakota. We're actually the largest community arts center in a three hundred and fifty-mile radius. Teacher support, student and teacher art resources, school tours for exhibits, classes, camps, after-school programs, and performances for kids and families. I can tell you, in this economy, having affordable, family-friendly activities is exceedingly important, and people are participating, and they're feeling good about it. Community pride and meeting place showcases the work of many different cultures. It's a place to discuss who we are, where we want to go as a community, and it's a celebration of our culture. It's a beautiful thing to work there, I have to say. I really enjoy watching it every day. This is the pottery classroom. Support for economic development, this is a huge part of what we do. Economic development is not a location, it's an activity. Downtown visitor interest, cultural tourists, weekend performances year-round, year-round visual art galleries, and the Cyclo Rama mural. Shoulder-season tourism, which is increasingly important. We, we plan our events with a mind to that. Bus groups, dinners, Cyclo Rama, conventions, small conventions, the Doll Mountain Culture Fest events, which is a whole month of just incredible diverse activities that Darla Drew-Leridol puts together. Everything from extreme sport, film festivals, to alternative music, to fundraisers, to lots of different kinds of things that attract all kinds of audiences. Summer season support, we collaborate with the Trolley, Summer Nights on Seventh. It's another reason to stay in downtown. And support for business development, recruiting support, tech, corporate professionals, families, businesses. Employment and business development. Regional artists and performers are employed, they showcase and market their work. Business training and professional development all happens at the Doll. Business meeting location, it's a value-added sub-location for larger conventions and business presentations. And now I would like to introduce Barb Evenson. Well, actually, first, this is a picture. The John T. Vikurvich Event Center and Classroom. Up, up in the right-hand side is a classroom that's been taken down, so now it's a reception. What you're seeing in the left-hand picture is a banquet setting in the John T. Vikurvich Event Center. And now, I'll turn it over to Barb Evenson.
My name is Barb Evenson. I'm Community Engagement Director for the Rapid City Arts Council at the Doll. I, like Linda and Darla, are thrilled to be here telling you that it's happening, instead of telling you how it's going to happen. I'm glad, actually, to be telling you what we're spending money on, and not what we're afraid we're going to have to spend money on. It's, it's great to be here, and thank you all for that. Okay, it's up there. In trying to manage the Doll, we're trying to balance four things. We're trying to balance cost against our mission, and our mission includes broad community engagement, economic impact, and community-mindedness. So all of that's balanced against costs, and I imagine that all of you are familiar with that equation. There's usually more mission than there is money, and we're in the same boat that everyone else is on that. Under our costs, we have resources available in what our potential use is by the community. But our mission is to, to ensure the broadest possible use, which means we need to keep the costs down for smaller groups, for nonprofit groups, for civic groups. We need to be competitive and price our for-profit offerings to businesses at competitive rates, so we're not trying to undercut other businesses. And we have to balance those things when people really need us. And going into this economic situation, we've thought very hard about how we do that. The economic impact, we're very conscious of the fact that we were built downtown. We, we fought really hard to stay downtown, because we thought it was really important. We still think it's really important. Darla, Darla, pointed out that this is the first really large convention and, and reception space in downtown in twenty-five years, the first that's been built, and it's going to have some great infrastructure in it for, for helping downtown and contributing to that vitality. And we also need to be community-minded, which means not just arguing for ourselves as the Rapid City Arts Council, or even for the Doll, but for the broader community goals. And that means working with the city, and working with other civic groups, working with any economic development units. And, another cool picture. Let's see, I'm confused here. Our current fee structure allows us to work with nonprofits and for-profits differently in arts-related groups, so we have three different prices. We're still trying to figure out what the market will bear. We're still trying to figure out what the additional costs are. The city contributes tremendously to that, those lower costs for nonprofits and for civic groups. Without the contribution the city makes, it would be impossible. So as you write that check to us every month, we really deeply appreciate it. As you look at the utility costs, that's what keeps the costs low for those community groups. Our fee goal is to try to have as much community use as possible, and not undercut for for-profit This is just a celebration, and I'm not going to read everything underneath each bullet point, but we have had tremendous interest in this building. We have people calling all the time. We have friends of friends calling all the time. We have people calling from out of state, somebody they know who comes into us in person and says, can you book this room for us? It's amazing. We have government users. We're very pleased that Sanford Lab, for example, wants to do a presentation at the Doll, because they like it to be part of the community. They do some stuff at the School of Mines, but they want it outside. We're very pleased by that sort of thing. Schools are coming for their functions. They're also coming to have events like the PTA Reflections Program. Businesses are coming for parties, weddings, their business, we've got a pig roast. Somebody could explain that one to me. Nonprofits and civic groups, a huge variety of people, everything from five-person meetings in the conference room to a hundred and fifty people in the event center. Every building, or every room in the building's being used by somebody for some reason. And we also have some arts-related activity. Currently, the Allied Arts Fund kickoff was there, Spring Birds for the Arts from Minneapolis is coming in to do its workshops. We have kids doing rock concerts. We have the Black Hills Center for Equality doing one-act plays, and, and then more. And then the Rapid City Arts Council has its programming, including the Cyclo Rama, its galleries, visual arts, performances, and my favorite part, community engagement, which is working with arts organizations to strengthen their ability to write grants and that sort of thing. I'll give you just a minute, but this is what we get to see every day, and that is so cool. We would like to thank Mayor Alan Hanks, all of the members of City Council who individually and collectively made this possible, and worked on this for years. We had a great city staff. By name, I'm going to say Robert Ellis and Rod Johnson, Marcia Elkins in Growth Management, Jim Preston, Pauline Sumption and Tracy Davis in Finance. Tracy, in particular, I owe personal thanks, because she tolerates all this weird stuff that I ask her all the time. Lon Van Duzen and Park and Rec, who take care of street, our sidewalks and everything else. And Guy at Sanitation, who is just incredibly helpful every day. Jim, Skull Construction, Forefront, were incredibly helpful in this process. Ruth Brennan, Mark Mahlers, Mayor Art Lacroix, and Chris Lacroix were very helpful in the Capitol Campaign, and we thank them, too. And there we go. Thank you all, and I hope to see you there.
Next on the agenda, we go to the non-public hearing items. These are items four through eighty-one, four through eighty-one. The Chair will look for a motion to open the public comment period on items four through eighty-one, please.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. In discussion on that motion. In discussion. Seeing none, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. I do have a number of speaker request forms. Just a reminder, we do have a time limit, and if you want to watch the lights up here, it's about two minutes each. It'll stay green, and then I believe with thirty seconds left, it'll turn yellow. And then if it does turn red on you, if you could just finish up your comments, and then we'll move on. Thank you so much. First speaker request form we have is Susan Nolan, eleven sixty-four Lookout Lane, item number thirty-one. And just a reminder for everyone, a lot of times we know who you are, but if you could just identify yourself for the record, for the folks in the audience and on TV.
Thank you, Mayor Hanks, and good evening, council members. My name is Susan Nolan, and tonight is the first time that I have been before the council on an issue that is of big concern to me, and that is the resolution to include sexual orientation in the nondiscrimination policy. The energy that I have for this issue comes from thirty years of working in the school system, where we do have a policy which protects all students, including gay students, from harassment. That is a federally mandated policy. I also am aware, from having worked in the school, that there are a certain number of our school employees who are gay, and who are afraid, and who are closeted, and they are not protected from discrimination in employment, any more than the city employees are. And I feel And I feel very strongly about this issue, that if we are to attract people to our community who are diverse and creative and talented, then we have to protect all people. If we were talking about gender or race in this issue, it would be an uproar. Civil rights belong to all people. Gay people, straight people, people of color, people of male or female, and people of a minority sexual orientation. And so I really, really urge you to look strongly at this. There are all kinds of things that you can think about why this isn't a good idea. But the thing that I ask you to think about is it is the right thing to do. To protect all people in our community, their employment, regardless of their sexual orientation, is an issue that is not covered and is not protected in our city. Other cities in our state do protect these, this class of people. Lead does, Brookings does, Vermillion does. It's not going to cost anything to do this, and there's been a discussion about, well, it could create huge liability. It can create liability if we don't protect this category of people. And so I ask you very strongly and very emphatically, and I think I have made my point about where I'm coming from, that I would like to see you pass this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Also have a speaker request form from Claudia Wieland Randall, 1706 Cruz Drive. There again, Claudia, if you could just identify yourself for the record, if you would, please.
Good evening, Claudia Wieland Randall from Rapid City. My first time addressing the council, so good evening. I'm gonna try to read this and look at the green light, so if I look a little weird, it's just, okay. I've lived in South Dakota for nine years. I love this state. I actually chose to live here, moving here in the dead of the winter from Florida. I don't count whether I'm crazy or not. I've recently retired and moved to the Rapid City area. I'm also speaking on Resolution Thirty-One about discrimination. I've lived my whole life in the closet. Not exactly, I've come out a few times. I'm coming out for you here now. I'm bisexual, so I can talk from both sides. I've been married, and I've had female lovers. I've been an executive of a nonprofit, and I've worked in the public healthcare system with people with active AIDS. We are all the same. We have a great opportunity here to demonstrate our admirable values of honoring the spirit of independence, as we do so well here in South Dakota. And we also respond very well and very swiftly and very lovingly to action when somebody needs us here in this state. It's one of the reasons I love this state. We have this opportunity in just two words, identity and orientation, as they relate to our existing employment discrimination and hate crime laws. The word sex in our laws refers to gender, male or female. It seems like this should be sufficient for equality of the sexes, but it is not. I know I would not invite scrutiny and labeling to what actions I take in my bedroom, and I doubt that any one of you would either. But our society doesn't always respect our privacy. There are those who judge and let their judgment be known to the other through verbal and/or bodily violence. That judgmental person may also use their personal power to exclude another for reasons not at all related to their abilities and performance in relation to employment. Much is written about sexual orientation and gender identity. The misinformation is being used to deny civil rights to a portion of our population in the United States of America. The one true thing for all of us is behavior is independent of orientation, whether heterosexual or homosexual. I have close longstanding personal and work relationships with people of both orientations, and I would assume all of you do also.
Claudia, if I would, if you could just wrap up.
Okay, I'm almost done. I'll talk a little faster, I'm a little nervous here. I have straight, gay, bisexual, lesbian, and transgender friends and former employees who have long committed relationships, are law-abiding, healthy, and access to their chosen field of employment. I have straight, gay, bisexual, lesbian, and transgender friends and former employees who have struggled with their relationships, laws, health, and employment. Regardless of what we do as individuals, we have a right in this country not to be judged and punished without a legal recourse. Unfortunately, that is not what happens. The United States Federal Bureau of Investigation rates hate crimes against LGBT individuals as a close third to religion, with race still being in first place. These are not crimes against individuals, but they are also crimes against an entire population who classify themselves as LGBT and to those who know and love them. Hate crime and employment discrimination laws already exist. Please add two words, orientation and identity, to an existing law and save thousands of people from hurtful and unlawful discrimination. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Claudia. We also have a speaker request form from Dale Burchard, item number thirty-one, 3004 Copper Lane Court.
Mr. Mayor, City Council Members, my name is Dale Barcher. I'm a 25-year Rapid City citizen, resident of Ward Two. I want to begin by thanking you tonight for your service to our community, your willingness to listen to the input of residents like myself. I'm here tonight to encourage you to vote no on this resolution regarding discrimination and any further discussion on it. I've read the letters that have been submitted to you by the ACLU and Equality South Dakota, and I agree that they have a right to petition their request. However, I strongly disagree with their premise, and even more, their lack of faith in the good people of Rapid City. It's my understanding that there haven't been cases of any kind of discrimination within our city hiring practices. I submit to you that until the city has a pattern of conducting itself improperly in that manner, that there is absolutely no reason to add sexual orientation, gender status, or familial status to our city's existing policy. This resolution and its perceived protections is unnecessary. Reading from the submitted ACLU letter, I quote these words. "It is the opinion of the American Civil Liberties Union that discriminatory conduct carried out against employees by municipality because of sexual orientation or gender identity is prohibited, prohibited by the Fourteenth Amendment Equal Protection Clause of the United States Constitution. This like statement is made not once, but five times in this short letter submitted to you. I believe this resolution creates a special class of people seeking a unique status when they, along with all people, are already protected under our Constitution. Much of the language of this resolution is vague and ambiguous. It seems to open Pandora's Box of a thousand questions, questions ranging from potential litigation against our city and the exact definition of terms used within it. Please vote no on this resolution. Vote no on continuing its discussion any further. It seems to me that you, as council members, have enough irons in the fire without trying to fix something that isn't broke. I'm thankful for your passion and your purpose in serving the great citizens of our great community. Thank you."
Thank you. We also have a speaker request form from Pam Murray, 1320 Florman Street, also on item number thirty-one. There again, Pam, if you could just identify yourself for those in the audience and watching on TV that may not know you.
My name is Pam Murray. I'm here as a businessperson, and I am in the insurance industry. I have been there for over 20 years now, and I just wanted to clarify some concerns and misconceptions that are being put forth regarding the reluctance to pass the nondiscrimination resolution. And you just heard some from the gentleman who spoke before me. Specifically, anyone can sue anybody nowadays for anything, and that's the reality. Everyone knows that, including the insurance companies. They live by that all the time. By implementing this resolution the way I would look at it, and as an actuarial, you're actually closing possible loopholes and limiting, not, limiting the exposure, not expanding your exposure. And possibly, you'll be entitled to a credit rather than a surcharge or an increase in your insurance premiums. And that's what you can check with your carrier, and they can probably give you additional information on that. But insurance companies, the more rules, the more regulations, the easier their jobs are. Also, the health, health coverage concerns. I've heard that there's also an issue that you might have to include transgender procedure as a part of your healthcare coverage. I do work some with insurance in the healthcare industry as well, and many of your healthcare items or services are already mandated by law. So, anything to do with a transgender procedure would be elective at this point. Your group enjoys a lower premium because you are a larger group of people, therefore you can maybe have more flexibility with your deductibles and copays. Isn't this interesting? But, what a transgender procedure, while not improbable, is probably unlikely to ever occur. More realistically, what I would like to see is maybe to start addressing the age issue, because there's so many, the aging of America and the workforce, that possibly, instead of cosmetic surgery being elective, that maybe now we can turn it into something that would be a part of your, your healthcare program. And that way, we could all avoid age discrimination. And if you do decide to adopt that, I would like to apply for a job with the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. We also have a speaker request form from Mary Jo Farmington of 823 St. Francis, also on item number thirty-one. There again, Mary Jo, if you could just identify yourself for the record.
Hello, I'm Mary Jo Farrington, and I'd like to speak, I'm hoping that the council will support this discrimination proposal. I just read today that discrimination claims filed with the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission jumped 15% this fiscal year. That's the highest level since the agency opened in 1965. And the article that I read indicates that this seems to be partly related to the, the crisis that we're having, the economic crisis right now, and a lot of people are being let off. And so, it becomes even more important that, that South Dakota and Rapid City is very clear on this issue. I agree with you, Mayor Hanks, that this is a great place, Rapid City is. And I know that while the numbers can be argued, there is somewhere between 5% to 15% of the American public that is homosexual. And I think that Rapid City would be doing a great service in including that component in a, in a nondiscrimination bill, because we want to be an inclusive city. And, and what Pam was saying, we've had a lot of discussions about it, is that inclusion of this will actually, I think, provide more protection to Rapid City, and I hope you'll support it. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have a speaker request form from Vivian Jenkins at 823 St. Francis.
I've never done this before, so I'll try it. I'm Vivian Jenkins, and I do live at 823 St. Francis. And I kinda waited to see what my friends said, so I could kinda fill in what, what I thought should be added. I used to teach university students, and I met, I knew many of them who were gay, transsexual, lesbian, and the whole gamut. And I knew a lot of them who, first of all, had to stay in the closet, and they were very, very uncomfortable with that. They were frightened of their status with professors. They were also prone to committing suicide. And that frightens me. As a psychology studier, that does frighten me. I deal with a lot of students and mental health issues, and folks in the state who are, again, mentally ill and would probably commit suicide anyway, given their depressions. But, one of the great levels of depression is the homosexual, the gender identity. And I hate it. I hate to see students being frightened of their status amongst their, 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 ooh, yellow, amongst their professors, et cetera. When I worked as a college professor, it was also my fear, as a college professor and as a bisexual professor, that I not be found out, otherwise I would be kicked out. That, to me, is frightening. And so I would hope that, given the concerns, hate crimes, suicides, mental health issues, et cetera, that you would accept this, whatever it is we're calling it here.
Okay. Thank you, Vivian.
This whatever, I, you know, can't think, I'm sorry. But thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council.
We also have a speaker request form from Marla Murphy, 521 St. Francis Street, on item number thirty-one. There again, Marla, if you would just identify yourself for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Marla Murphy. I live in Rapid City, and I want to thank Patty for bringing this up, and for all the speakers for this, because it took courage for them to come up here. But this policy that you're setting isn't for the city, it's for your employees. And that's what you have to think about, is the safety of your employees and a safe working environment, not the city. Now, through your leadership, others might see this, and I agree with it, as not being nondiscrimination. But I want you to think about an employee that's down there and sees some of these pamphlets that I've gotten in the mail, sitting around about their sexual orientation or gender identity. Who do they go to? What recourse do they have? Absolutely none. Because if they go to management, management will just say and listen to it, and they'll stop it. But there's no recourse from you, the policymakers, to ensure that the discrimination does not happen. And that is a form of discrimination. It creates unsafe work environment. It starts making one of your potential employees wonder what's going on. Also, those who have friends who have the sexual orientation and gender identity will also start be wondering what's going on. It creates a very unsafe, very hostile working environment for those who have sexual orientation and gender identity. That's what you're here to do, is protect those employers. There should be no liability about this if you follow your own policy and you put it in there. No liability whatsoever. Person can sue. That's a right of all people, is to sue. And this thing about liability is about as false as can be, but there has been liability on it. I will tell you right now, there's a case- I will tell you right now, there's a case in South Carolina against a trans woman who is bringing discrimination suits against that city, Charlotte, North Carolina. And their lawyer basically said, to defend it, "It's not written, it's not part of Edna, so we don't have to follow it." They have all the rights to fire this person just for their identity. It should all be done on work merits and work balance, and it's not. It's based on their gender identity or their sexual orientation. You know, I was proud of Rapid City when Rapid City stood up against the Phelps clan, but I also know there's two types of hate, overt and covert. The overt was Phelps. The covert was the ones, the letters that I got, and that's what's in your work environment. I also asked the people here, some of us, "What is your greatest asset?" Greatest asset is the people. That means all the people to be safe. And then, what is the difference between a manager and a leader? You are the leaders. You write this in, you make it happen. It is up to the managers to follow your lead and make it happen. And I'm hoping that I can be proud of Rapid City as I was when Mr. Phelps came here, and that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Marla. I do not have any additional speaker request forms on item thirty-one. Is anyone else wish to speak on item thirty-one? Very good. I do have a speaker request form on item seventy-three from John Scobertstad, 4600 Jackson Boulevard. John, if you just identify yourself.
Yes. Good evening. My name's John Scobertstad. I live at 4600 Jackson Boulevard. I addressed the Legal and Finance Committee last week, and I brought this to their attention. And I is glad that Alderman Malcolm Chapman suggested that we bring this to the Planning Commission, and it's regarding the applications for major amendments to a PRD and a PCR. And on our application here in the city of Rapid, we have a bottom-left-hand corner on the application requirement for the landowner to sign the application. And with all due respect to Jason Green and the city attorney, they determined that that wasn't the case with regard to a piece of property that I own. I'm here this evening to just address the council and have them, hopefully, instruct the Planning Commission to initiate an ordinance requiring landowner's signature so as to create a fairness policy here in Rapid City. I just, when I say fairness, outside entities, whether a leaseholder or whatever, comes into the city and comes into our city attorney's office and subsequently suggests litigation concerning an agreement that they have with the landowner, which would be me, and having the city attorney agree with them after reviewing my lease, I feel, isn't a fair policy because, with all due respect to the city attorney's office, that which I have in place with regard to a leasing on my property is basically between myself and the leasing. And I've heard before at city council meetings that the city doesn't want to become involved with landowners and contracts that the city has no part of. And so, I'm hoping that, without taking into consideration a liability, the city would direct the Planning Commission to have these requirements put in place because, so as to protect the landowner. And I was just devastated when I found out the ruling by the city attorney's office regarding my property with regard to a leasing and a lease agreement I have on my property. And subsequently, I was told, having a PRD or a PCR designation on your property assures the landowner that they have a secure piece of property as far as nothing can be done on that property without their approval. And I've been told now that this isn't the case. So, I'm hoping that you'll direct the Planning Commission to possibly initiate an ordinance requirement for landowner's signature on PRDs and PCDs in the future.
Okay. Thank you, John.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional speakers? I do not have any additional speaker request forms on items four through eighty-one. Anyone else wish to speak to any items four through eighty-one inclusive? Anyone else? I want to make sure everyone has the opportunity to speak. If not, I'd ask, Chair would ask for a motion to close the public comment period on items four through eighty-one.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to close the public comment period for items four through eighty-one. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We are under the consent calendar items, item four through fifty-five. Chair would ask if any items need to be removed from the consent calendar. The notes, what I have is twenty-six, thirty-one, and thirty-two. Any additional to that? Please turn your light on. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Item fourteen, please.
Okay, item fourteen. Let's go to Alderman Lloyd LaCroy.
Item forty-three, please.
And item forty-three. Any additional? We are dealing with items four through fifty-five inclusive, and we will be pulling item fourteen, twenty-six, thirty-one, thirty-two, and forty-three. Any others? Please turn on your light. If not, Chair would look for a motion to approve the consent calendar items four through fifty-five inclusive, with the exception of fourteen, twenty-six, thirty-one, thirty-two, and forty-three. And we have a second. Thank you. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. That does take us to the item, let's see, let's go to item fourteen under Public Works. And Alderman Kroger, could you please read that in?
Item number fourteen is to approve a recommendation to refer the St. Patrick Street and Mount Restmore Road ADA and vehicle traffic safety to the MPO. I would move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank Public Works Director for bringing this item forward and the Public Works Committee for discussing this. I think some brief history is warranted. The state, in my understanding, has agreed to removing the steps on the northwest corner of this property so that it's ADA accessible. It's also important to note that with the addition of Starbucks and Walgreens to two corners of that intersection, which is a very exciting addition, by the way, both stores, there is a lot more traffic now than there ever has been before. And there are vehicles, I haven't seen vehicles wait three cycles, but I've seen vehicles wait two cycles to make a left turn. And this is only going to become more of an issue as the weather gets nicer and especially as we move into the summer months. So, I would like to ask our Public Works Director approximately what date we can hope the DOT will be able to move forward on this, and if there's anything that we can do to facilitate an earlier date, if the date is twenty-fourteen, as I had heard at one point.
Okay, let's go to Robert Els, our Public Works Director.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, the indications I've been given from the South Dakota Department of Transportation, because this is a state route and they do have jurisdiction, is that as soon as they could make those capital improvements would be twenty-fourteen. I believe at the Public Works Committee meeting on Wednesday, we discussed taking that to the MPO and have the Executive Policy Committee see if that, they can't come forward with a recommendation to the DOT to move that forward in the capital improvement program that the state does have.
Let's go back to Alderman Sam Quaker. You still have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. So, the recommendation then from the city will be a strong recommendation in the MPO that we encourage the state to move forward on this sooner.
Yes, that will be the city's position.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number twenty-six, Mr. Kroger, if you would, please.
Item number twenty-six is to approve a request by the city of Rapid City to consider an application for a resolution for a road name change from South Highway seventy-nine to Campbell Street, more generally described as being located along the section line for nine thousand two hundred and seventy-four and a half feet. I would move that this be continued to April sixth.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue item number twenty-six to the April sixth city council meeting. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Under Legal and Finance Committee, let's go to item thirty-one, and Alderman Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. Item thirty-one is a resolution regarding discrimination. Yield to the floor.
Okay, could we have a motion, please? Could we have a motion, please? Do you want to offer a motion?
Yes, I would like to motion, yes.
To approve?
To approve, yes.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
No, I would like to continue discussion.
Okay.
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Let's go to Alderwoman Patty Martin, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This resolution came about when I was attending the Human Relations Review Ordinance Review Committee. There was some discussion when it was being formed to include sexual orientation and gender identity in the language of the ordinance itself. I was advised by Jason Green that it didn't seem appropriate to insert that language into the ordinance, and since I was not a voting member of the committee, the rest of the group voted not to include that. With that, I thought that then I would think there should be a separate resolution on this. So, I wrote a draft of a resolution, sent it to the Jason Green, and he helped me rewrite the wording a little bit. And since I felt that he's, since he wrote it, he supported it, so then I sent it out to be added to the Legal and Finance Committee. And then, that seemed to have created quite of a stir. And Jason, at that time, when it came before the first Legal and Finance Committee, presented a number of objections to the resolution, one of them being that would increase liability insurance. I have looked at other cities, Vermillion, Brookings, and Lead, they have added similar language to their ordinances, and as far as I can tell, their liability has not increased, nor have they been faced with a flood of lawsuits. The second objection that was brought up was the cost of health insurance. I requested Jason to give me some actual dollar figures of the specific cost, if we were covered a medical procedure that we did not cover before, and I have not been able to get that kind of determination. If we don't have any cost determination of how it would actually affect the city insurance or city employees, then it's basically a non-issue to me. If you can't specify how much it would actually cost, then we don't know if it would cost two cents or two hundred thousand. So, and the third objection was that something called Dillon's Rule, that Rapid City, because of the type of municipality it is, would not be able, would not, is not given any more authority than the state allows it to do. So, then if, then city would not be able to legally add sexual orientation and gender identity. I think only that rule comes out if, in fact, there is a lawsuit and it goes through the courts, then that Dillon's Rule is invoked. I still think the city has the power to include sexual orientation and gender identity to its current policies. Whether or not it's actually enforced or not is still sort of an open question, but I do believe the city has responsibility to provide a safe and workplace for its gay and lesbian employees. The other objections I've had heard is that some council members were looking for a specific in cases of discrimination. When I talked to Jason Green, he brought up four cases of discrimination. Only one of them included was based on sexual orientation, and that just simply we won, we basically won that, won that issue. In fact, we won all the discrimination cases. So, even then, I don't know, it doesn't seem like, even with the lawsuits we have had, only one case of discrimination was ever brought forth on sexual orientation. Now, Ron, even that, Gray made a great point, and probably the hardest one I had to answer is that, why should we give gay and lesbian special protections when like redheads or short people don't get protected? Well, I thought, well, Ron here is already protected. He's white and he's male. That's gender and race.
Go ahead.
If I'm going to be addressed, I prefer, I prefer not to be addressed.
Very good. Typically, what we do, Patty, is when you're discussing, we typically don't allow discussion of other council members' opinion because that is certainly their ability to speak up on behalf of themselves.
Oh, okay. I apologize then for speaking on behalf of Ron. He can certainly share his opinions on his own. I apologize. But, that is one of the issues, why should we protect gay and lesbians when we don't protect redheads? Well, we have redheaded people feel like they've been discriminated against because of the color of their hair, and they're certainly more than welcome to form their own group and advocate that hair color be included as a reason not to discriminate. Right now, I'm just focusing on these gay and lesbian city employees. That's my only focus, not whether or not they have red hair, blonde hair, they're short, tall, fat, white, or what have you. I do not believe sexual orientation should be a basis for firing or refusing to hire someone or devoting them or otherwise treating them badly simply because of their orientation. I view it not as a special class, but the same class as race, gender, family, status. And that's, that's how I view this particular.
Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyfembach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Understanding that this does affect a lot of people, and I appreciate the people coming forward and giving their concerns. And I've done a lot of, like I do on most items, do a lot of research back and forth on it, and one of the things that I've come to a conclusion in is the fact that this affects employees in general. I don't really typically deal straight with employees. And with that in hand, I'd appreciate the mayor to weigh in on this and give us, what your feelings would be in reference to how this would affect the citizens and the employees of Rapid City, first of all. So, if I may.
Just, you know, we can certainly go to Jason Green for the legal ramifications, what he believes. Typically, I do not weigh in during the debate. I'd be happy to offer any opinions after that, but quite honestly, I think at this point, it's actually at the council level, and I think that the discussion needs to remain with the council.
I'm fine with that, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to give you the opportunity to weigh in ahead of time, and if you prefer not to, I understand. And I'll go to Jason Green because I do have some questions for him.
Very good. Let's, do you want to state your question, please?
Understanding that when people have discussions, they're always in context, Jason. So, I think that with my discussions with you, I have a different understanding of some of the things that have been set up here in the opinion of people who have ability to, and I'll come straightforward and say that, yeah, I have a question on the ability of all of the employees, which we've had conversation about in the past. I think we passed a resolution that if employees in general have some concerns, that they don't seem like the channels that they're going through are appropriate, that they have the opportunity to come and visit with a council member. And I think that's an important factor. One of the key factors that has been made is that all the employees, all the citizens, I'm tasked with, as an Alderman, being fair to everybody, inclusive of all the people. And one of the questions I would have, Jason, is is there a grievance process available for people who feel that someone in the city has been treated unfairly or discriminated against or just plain, you know, had a bad situation?
Let's go to Jason Green, our city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any employee who feels they've been treated unfairly by management for any reason can file a grievance. Whether they state an actual basis for the grievance is another matter. And what I would like to point out to the council is that for several years, the council has had a code of conduct, and I've referenced this previously, that very clearly says, "The city of Rapid City expects each employee to undertake their duties in a fair and impartial manner, refraining at all times from discrimination or the dispensation of special privileges." So, I believe that the city council has clearly said, "We expect our employees not to discriminate." So, there would be a grievance process available.
Now, now, understanding that, there's two separate entities basically within the structure of employees, and one being union, one being non-union. Now, in the union contracts, is there, does this language exist?
Jason Green, city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. The code of conduct that was approved by the council applies to all city employees. Each union contract that we have has a grievance process that the employees in the respective collective bargaining units could access, and the non-union employees also have a grievance process that's available to them. So, the policy applies to everyone. Everyone has access to a grievance process.
Okay, Mr. Wyfembach, you still have your word.
Thank you, Jason. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It was stated earlier that there had been some, four cases in the history of Rapid City that were brought to the courts. One being a homosexual discrimination suit. that were brought to the courts. One being a sexual discrimination suit. So there's an opportunity for somebody who feels for sexual orientation or whatever, that they, they have recourse. Do they not?
Jason Green?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, the, the incidents that I spoke with Alderman Martenson about were incidents that I am personally aware of. And the, the one that, that, that rings a bell for me most clearly is an age discrimination lawsuit that was brought against the city. Um, it was alleged that we didn't hire someone because of their age. Now, it didn't matter that the hiring authority didn't even know the age of the person when they made the decision. We had to defend that suit all the way up to the point of trial before that suit was dismissed. There's a federal statute that protects age discrimination, so that, that was the reason that, that, uh, the city had to spend thousands of dollars defending itself from perfectly legitimate action. The creation of a policy that adds sexual orientation and gender identity would create an ideal status, or an identical status, for city employees, and that's the reason for my recommendation not to do it.
So your recommendation is not to pass this?
That's correct.
Okay. I've, I've tried to be fairly, fairly consistent in, in, in making decisions based upon, in weighing out the facts and, and taking your recommendation. You're the city attorney, I'm not. I, I don't, I don't oppose to be a city attorney. I want to make sure. I think that our history of, of employee treatment throughout Rapid City has, has seemed to have a good history and, and room and opportunities for people to, uh, allow any bad practices. I'm sure that anybody in here doesn't want a bad practice whatsoever to happen. Unfortunately, sometimes they do happen. And, and, and there's availability for those people to have grievance processes. They can go to their council members. Uh, there's a lot of opportunity. And the other question I have for you, Jason, state and federal, uh, I, I believe that Rapid City's ordinances and laws are parallel to state and federal. Is there, do we have differences in this particular area? Or is it usually we adopt what the state and the federal have put forward?
Let's go to Jason Green, our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Generally, we follow the mandates of the federal government in these regards. We mirror federal law today. If the council were to enact the resolution, we would be doing more than required by federal and state law.
Okay, Mr. Wyffenbach, still the floor, sir.
I appreciate everybody being patient with me. I'm trying to... I think there was reference made to, and I know I visited you with, with you earlier about, uh, the costs. Now, I don't remember. I think that the insurance companies refused to actually, or did not get back to you and actually give you any related costs, if there would be any ident, um, added costs, which I highly doubt that that would happen, that there would be any costs, maybe differences. I don't see why there would be or would not be. But, go ahead, Jason.
Jason Green, city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In regard to the insurance issue, there are two aspects to this. The first is the city's employment practices liability coverage. I asked the question directly of the Independent Insurance Agents Committee's chairperson. He, in turn, talked to the underwriters that, uh, provide the city with its policy, and they declined to provide us with any kind of a number of what impact, um, this change in policy might have. But they did make very clear that they encourage us very strongly not to adopt this policy and not to take on more liability than we're currently obligated to take on by federal law. So they didn't give us a number that I could pass on. That's the reason there hasn't been anything coming forward. On the health insurance side, um, I want to remind the council that the city is self-insured, and the premiums that are paid are paid by the taxpayers and by the employees. We have a stop-loss policy in cases where there are very large claims. The stop-loss carrier said that they don't have a claims history with these types of coverages because most, most plans exclude them. So they couldn't provide us a cost either. Their best guess was that it would be below the amount, um, that the stop-loss coverage provides for, so the entire cost would be borne by the city and its employees.
Okay, Mr. Wyffenbach, still the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe in, and, and I'm not concerned about the added costs. I think if it, if an added cost made a difference between someone, uh, being discriminated or somebody not being discriminated against, I could live with the added cost. But with, with everything else in context, I, I would like to make a substitute motion to, uh, to deny this, uh, resolution.
Okay, we have a substitute motion. Do we have a second? Okay, we have a substitute motion and a second, and that is to deny or to not approve the resolution. Let's go to discussion on that substitute motion, please. And I have a number of lights. I'm gonna go ahead and go straight down the list here. Alderman Lloyd LaCroy.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, you know, first of all, I'd like to thank Patty for all the work that she's done on this and all the people that have come forward to speak on this. I fielded several phone calls on this matter. Uh, I probably forgot more information than most people from being chairman of the Human Relations Commission, uh, ordinance when this come forward. And, and I've, very straightforward with the people I talked to on the phone, that I didn't support, uh, the resolution. But I, but I did give Patty encouragement to, to talk to other people and educate the people because that's how we change the way things are happening. And she did a very good job there, and this was her opportunity. The reason why I don't support the resolution is because I think it creates a, a special group of people. And I think if you want to break out different classes, I have a problem with that. I mean, when you get into races, do you, all the races, do, do that type of thing? I think our country has changed dramatically over the last ten years. Ten years ago, you'd, you'd have more opposition of what was happening today. Today, we had one compared to everybody else. So, I mean, things have changed. Education, people are getting more educated, seeing more comfortable with gay lesbians in the workplace, in the community, and I think it's more acceptable. And I, I've explained that through the, uh, through the task force. I bring forward, uh, the TV shows that you see on, on, on TV now. I mean, Brothers and Sisters, Desperate Housewives, uh, The Ellen DeGeneres Show. I mean, these are things that you'd never seen ten years ago. It, it's getting more acceptable. And, and I've got several friends that are gay and lesbians that work in, in supervisor positions. You know, bottom line is, is I think things have changed around. I think, uh, the civil rights movement helped everybody out tremendously. I think if, if somebody in the workplace has a problem in this city, they're gonna come to their council person, they're gonna come to their management. If they don't get it from management, they're gonna come to their council. We've, we've discussed that. And, so I think, I think things are, are okay. And I want to thank you guys for coming forward, and, and I'd just like you to reflect how far things have come instead of, uh, concentrating on what you think that hasn't come. You know, you, you talk a lot about people having been able to come out of the closet, and a lot of them have because of things that have changed. And so I think you need to think, just consider how far you've come and not how, how far you need to go. Thank you.
Okay, let's go to Alderwoman Karen Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've spent a lot of time thinking about this, and I'm convinced that the city has not, within our employment practices, um, just, practiced discrimination. And I think that we, from everything that I understand, our, our employee prac, employee practices are fair and, um, treat people, um, equally. I also pay attention to the lawyers who are concerned with liability. I have been a part of several large, uh, some lawsuits against the city in the time that I've served on the city council. And frankly, it was a surprise to our attorneys that those cases were lost. And they had nothing to do with, these were, this, in this case, it was a large, um, decision regarding, uh, an accident in Canyon Lake Park. So I am concerned when our lawyers give us advice, and our lawyers are recommending that we not, um, take, approve this resolution and move in this direction with the full knowledge that our employment practices are not discriminatory. I'd also have to say that, um, within my own experience, um, I have friends and family members, and I have worked with folks from the gay and lesbian community, and I would certainly be very concerned if I thought, um, they are being discriminated within, um, in our city. I think the larger issue that's here is, and I heard it in the conversation, the discussion, was our city in the larger case. And frankly, this, um, resolution will be only affecting city employees. I do understand something about the water dripping on the stone. I've watched, um, civil rights be extended to a number of groups, black people, women, and I am concerned about civil rights. But with that in mind, I see this particular action not appropriate for a municipality. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I actually have, um, a substitute motion, and I'm not sure that this is the appropriate place to...
You can make one more substitute motion.
Because I feel strongly that, um, the city needs to take some position in regard to the status of sexual orientation and gender identity. I would offer this as a substitute motion. I would move to direct the city attorney to draft a resolution expressing the city's support for adding sexual orientation and gender identification to the classifications protected by federal law from discrimination in employment, and to encourage South Dakota's congressional delegation to support the necessary amendments. I offer this motion because I think that is the appropriate place for this civil rights issue to take place. And I hope my colleagues will second the motion and support the motion, this substitute motion.
Thank you. We have a second substitute motion. Do we have a second? Do we have a second, please? Okay, we have a second. We are on to the second substitute motion. Everyone clear on the motion? Anybody who'd like to have it repeated? Okay? Okay, you'd like to have it repeated? Okay, Karen? Why don't you go ahead and read it back in again, please, Karen?
The motion is to direct the city attorney to draft a resolution expressing the city's support for adding sexual orientation and gender identity to the classifications protected by federal law from discrimination in employment, and to encourage South Dakota's congressional delegation to support the necessary amendments.
Okay, everyone clear on the motion? We have a, a second substitute motion and a second. Discussion on the second substitute motion only, please. Uh, let's go, Patty, did you want to talk to about the motion that's on the floor? Very good. Let's go to Alderwoman Patty Martenson.
Well, it's down to a choice between Karen's substitute motion and Ron's substitute motion. I think I would probably prefer Karen's. Um, with regard to the cost of the gender, uh, reassignment, I've been looking online, and they, the lowest I've seen is ten thousand. So if we're talking about a cost issue, it probably isn't all that much.
Patty, just, Patty?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Just, just a reminder, the, the second substitute motion on the floor is to direct the staff to write a resolution encouraging the changing of federal statutes. So I think we're, we need to make sure we stick to that topic and not go back to the original topic if we could, please. Sorry about that.
Good intentions are not a substitute for the law. If Karen feels like it's better that it be dealt with the legislature, then I would support that idea, but I would prefer the resolution be passed on a city level.
Thank you. I have no further lights. Any additional comments on the second substitute motion? Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. Clarification, if this motion passes, this, this is to draft a resolution that will come forward for further consideration and discussion.
That is correct.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
This would not be final, uh, disposition of the topic. Any further discussion? Second substitute motion is to direct staff to draft a resolution to send the, to the congressional delegation. Seeing no further lights, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. I'm gonna take a roll call. Just, let's go ahead and take a roll call, please. I only heard about three or four votes there, so I want to make sure I get it right.
Quaker?
No.
Olson?
Aye.
Kroger? Costello?
Aye.
LaCroy?
Aye.
Martenson?
Aye.
Wyffenbach?
No.
Okay, motion passes on a four to three vote, and since this is a resolution, the chair will declare it passed. So this will be coming back through legal and finance and public works through the next process. Is that enough time for you, Jason? Okay, very good. Thank you, everyone. On to item number thirty-two. And Mr. Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. Item thirty-two is to direct the city attorney's office to prepare a resolution of intent to lease eighty acres on North Elk Vale Road to Matt Cammer for the purposes of discussion. I will move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval and discussion on that motion. Let's go to Jason Green, city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the, uh, item on the agenda needs a little bit of clarification. The intent is not to lease the entire, entire eighty acres. It is for the limited purpose of, uh, conducting a hay operation.
Okay, very good. Uh, let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can, can someone just tell us what it insists of? Is there, like, a...
Yeah, let's, let's try Robert Ellis. I think he can probably give us the terms.
Thank you, Mayor. I contacted Matt Cammer, and Matt, Matt and his family actually hays this property, or was hayin' this property, uh, from the previous owner for a cost of one thousand eight hundred and eighty-six dollars and three cents per year for the eighty acres that were currently, were recently deeded over to the city. Mr. Cammer is very interested in continuing to, to hay that property, uh, until such time as the soccer fields are constructed. So contacted, uh, Matt. Uh, he would, uh, like to enter into a lease agreement. Of course, that takes a resolution of intent to set a hearing, uh, before, before the council does enter into any type of a lease agreement.
You said for a cost? It cost us eighteen hundred dollars?
No, we receive.
That's, that's what I thought you meant. Okay, thank you.
Okay, everyone clear on the motion? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. That takes us to item number forty-three, please. And Alderman Quaker.
Item forty-three is to acknowledge the discussion of plant closings in Rapid City for the purposes of discussion. I will move to acknowledge the report.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to acknowledge the discussion. Any comments on that? Let's go to Alderman Lloyd LaCroy.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I'd brought this forward at legal and finance, uh, large part in because, you know, I am employed from one of the, uh, companies that have decided to shut down this year, uh, and we found out that week. And, uh, from that day on, not only being a council member, but also being someone who was employed there, I fielded a lot of negative, uh, comments and, uh, a lot of angry constituents. And it was a very difficult situation for a lot of people to understand, and that's why I brought it forward, is because I think, uh, that people in the, constituents in Rapid City needed some acknowledgement that, uh, they were getting laid off and some things were happening. And before I do that, you know, one of the things I want to, I want to mention is some of the positive things that has happened in the city is, is with, uh, economic development happening out with RPM, Accupress, Northrop Grumman. I mean, there's some very positive companies that have come into town, and we need to remember that. But, you know, I, I do want to acknowledge all these employees. These aren't people from, from SEI and from Maryland. These aren't people that just worked someplace for five years, ten years. We just seen a police officer who, who had been there for thirty years. Some of these people have been at those places for thirty years. Yeah, uh, twenty years, twenty-four years. They, they've made a, they've went through the slow times, the good times, the bad times. They had the seniority to where they weren't, uh, the ones losing the hours. They made sacrifices for their companies, taking time off without pay, working when they needed to, that type of thing. And I want to acknowledge them for all their hard work. It takes commitment for people to work that many years in one place. And, uh, just do a, uh... I've gotten a lot of questions on, I, I gotta answer this. I, I hope you guys understand. Is that, Lloyd, what are you gonna do now? Every employee that's had that happen has, gets that question right away. What are you gonna do now? Well, you know, they're waiting for things to happen. And I was even, uh, in shock and impatient and made phone calls to Mayor Hanks and everybody right away, trying to get answers. But, uh... But what's gonna happen is they're gonna see what, what the South Dakota labor comes in and has to offer. They're making plans to cut back their budgets, cutting cable, try to refinance houses, take money out of their 401Ks to try and pay off their things. We got some people who are applying for the jobs in Wyoming, because that's where the pay rates hire. They're gonna move. They're trying. And so they are actively doing something, but, you know, remember when you're asking them, it's not even been a week, and some of them not even longer. And so if you want a true answer, that's what they're gonna be doing. They're looking at cutting back. And, and they will move on and, and survive, but there will be sacrifices. And I just wanted to share that with the rest of the council, so they understand that, you know, this isn't just a one headline thing. And if you happen to see some of these employees, thank them for their work. Don't ask them what, what they're gonna do. Thank them for their service, the years of service in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyfembach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Alderman LaCroy. Appreciate your, your candor, and I think one of the first questions I asked you tonight when I seen you is what are you gonna do? And I'm, I'm understanding that some of us, you know, have, and I think that, you know, there's a lot of people in the community that are struggling with, and I've struggled for a long time with working two and three and four jobs and, and keeping my head above water, and, and I'm hoping that we're committed, and I know I'm committed, to do anything I can to help try to, you know, alleviate something and, and look for opportunities. And, and my message would be to them is to hang in there and, and do, understand that, you know, we, we've, we understand what they're going through, and if there's opportunities that we can jump on with economic development, partnering with them to help them bring some of the companies like you had mentioned, Lloyd. We do feel, and it's, it's a shame that Maryland is ending it in that way, and SEI and some of those places, and understanding that the whole country is, is in the same situation that we are. It makes us feel a little bit better, but not a lot better, in anything that we can do or lend a hand to, and we appreciate your comments, Lloyd, and, and moving forward. We hope we can bring some businesses to Rapid City and, and step up the efforts somehow to, to help these people and try to help bring some of the smaller companies that do stay around for a while and employ these people, because those were, those were good jobs. And I think Lloyd makes a good valid point, that those are good, actual, good, very good jobs with very good wages, and we're gonna miss some people. And, and on the same token, we do appreciate what Maryland has done for us in the past also, so, thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is to acknowledge the discussion. Any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. That does take us to the end of the consent calendar. We are on to the non-consent calendar, items fifty-six through eighty-one. We'll start with ordinances. Item number fifty-six, please. Mr. Quaker.
Need public comment first.
Actually, just so you know, the, the schedule or the agenda upfront called for the public comment on four through eighty-one, and so we've actually taken that, even though it says here fifty-six through eighty-one. I guess what we can do is, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on items fifty-six through eighty-one that does not, that did not get the opportunity to speak at the public comment period earlier? If not, I think we're okay. Yeah, I, I saw that a little bit earlier, too, and, very good. Item number fifty-six, please.
Item fifty-six is first reading in ordinance fifty-four eighty-nine, ordinance repealing chapter one point oh eight of the municipal code relating to wards and precincts and adopting a new chapter one point oh, one point oh eight of the municipal code. Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval and discussion on that motion. Any discussion? Any discussion? The reason I'm delaying is, is this an ordinance, and we only have five people in the room. So, there's Lloyd. Now we have number six. Let's go to Erin Costello.
Can I just have some clarification on what, what we're voting on here?
Mr. Preston, let me, this is the first reading of an ordinance change that would, any, the newly annexed property that has come into the city, we'd be identifying those within the, with the wards, and I believe that there is a map attached, is that my story?
I was curious what that map was. Thank you for explaining that. Thanks.
Very good. Motion on the floor is for first reading of ordinance fifty-four eighty-nine. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Fifty-seven, please.
Item fifty-seven is first reading in ordinance fifty-four ninety-four and ordinance submitting seventeen point oh six of the municipal code for rezoning requested by the city of Rapid City from no-use district to general commercial district located east of South Valley Drive and south of South Dakota Highway forty-four. Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and second for approval and discussion on that motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item fifty-eight, please.
Item fifty-eight is first reading in ordinance fifty-four ninety-five and ordinance submitting seventeen point oh six of the municipal code for rezoning from no-use district to general commercial district as requested by the city of Rapid City located at thirty-ten East Highway forty-four and two thousand and one Lancer Drive. Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and second for approval and discussion on that motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item fifty-nine, please.
Item fifty-nine is first reading in ordinance fifty-four ninety-six and ordinance submitting seventeen point oh six of municipal code for rezoning within the described property as requested by the city from no-use district to low-density residential district located at fifteen fifty Valley Drive. Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and second for approval and discussion on that motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item sixty, please.
Item sixty is first reading in ordinance fifty-four ninety-seven, ordinance submitting seventeen point oh six of municipal code for rezoning within the described property as requested by the city from no-use district to public district located east of South Valley Drive and south of South Dakota Highway forty-four. Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and second for approval and discussion on that motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item sixty-one, please.
Item sixty-one is second reading in ordinance fifty-four eighty-seven, ordinance to repeal the requirement for precious metals and precious gems licensed by repealing chapter five point four zero of municipal code. Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and second for approval and discussion on that motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Sixty-two, please.
Item sixty-two is second reading in ordinance fifty-four eighty-eight and ordinance to correct the numbering of certain sections of the municipal code by reenacting chapter three point two six and creating chapter three point two eight of the municipal code. Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and second for approval and discussion on that motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. We're gonna take items sixty-three through seventy-two. They all have the same motion to continue, so we'll take those up collectively. Alderman Quaker.
That was my motion.
Very good. Thought it was.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue items sixty-three through seventy-two inclusive to the April sixth city council meeting. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item number seventy-three, please.
Item seventy-three is to request the planning commission to review possible ordinance amendments requiring landowner signatures on applications yielded the floor.
Okay, we have a motion, please. Let's get a motion on the floor before...
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval, discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyfembach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for Jason. I visited with Jason earlier about this same item, and, and there was some illusions made that, that our city attorney did some studying of somebody's lease, and I don't think that was the case whatsoever. So first of all, I want to give Mr. Green the opportunity to, to shed the light on that and how this, this happened.
Okay, let's go to Jason Green, our city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our office was presented with a lease by Growth Management Department with the question of whether or not the landowner's signature was required on an application. We did the research, we reviewed the lease, and there is no authority, no ordinance or no statute that requires a landowner's signature. We have a, a practice of requiring it internally that the Growth Management Department has adopted and, and for good reasons, but it's not a legal requirement. Therefore, we advised that based on the lessees' right to use the property in the way they were proposing, that Growth Management should accept that application. We did not offer an opinion as to whether or not Verizon should sue John Skolberstad or whether Mr. Skolberstad should sue them. That's clearly a private matter between the two of them. The only thing we were looking at was whether or not, under the lease, the lessee had the right to make the application, and they clearly did.
Thank you. Jason, in your opinion, would, do we need to change the practice that we have right now?
Jason?
I don't see any harm in reviewing the practice that we have and considering what we do today and what alternatives may exist. Whether or not it needs to be changed probably is worthy of some discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Karen Olson.
In regard to the conversation, Jason, I was in the audience when this was discussed, and it wasn't crystal clear to me what the discussion, my understanding, my understanding is it was a private matter between the applicant who has leased property from Mr. Skolberstad, and therefore that was the reason why there wasn't, that's why Mr. Skolberstad wasn't included in the discussion. Is it the, is it your feeling that as this, this moves forward, review of the ordinance will give us a, a greater understanding of what is happening legally and what would be the legal implications of potentially intervening between two parties who are, who have an agreement?
Go to Jason Green, our city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe that the discussion would be useful in determining whether or not the practice should continue as it does, whether it should be eliminated entirely, whether it should be adopted as an ordinance, or whether some variant should be adopted. Right off the top of my head, I'm, I'm not willing to make a recommendation at this point. There are a lot of implications of requiring a landowner's signature, not the least of which is that a lessee may have the right to bring an application forward. And perhaps just a little bit of background would help in this context. Mr. Skolberstad leased a portion of his property to a cellular company so they could erect a cell tower. And the dispute centers around the addition of another antenna onto that cell tower. So the, the issue on the lease is really between Mr. Skolberstad and Verizon. The, the issue with the city is getting the application in front of the planning commission so that the antenna can be added to the existing tower. It's not for the addition of a new tower, it's for the use of the property in the manner that has already been approved.
Okay. Karen, go ahead, please.
Just to make a comment about that, it's important in the community to understand that the city has been a real advocate for shared use of towers, so there are not multiple towers occurring, popping up instead. I'm not sure what the legal term is, but it is certainly more than one. I guess it's co-locating, maybe? Is that the right word? And I think that's been good for the city and a good policy, and we have followed in regard to others. And I'll be in support of the motion, because I do think it'll bring clarity to an issue that obviously has some legal and other implications for the city that we all need to understand before we move forward with this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure that I need to abstain, but I'm going to be on the, on the safe side and be consistent with my abstention in committee, because my employer is a telecommunications provider.
Yeah, very good. We'll make, we'll make sure we note that. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor is for approval. The only thing, let me just add a, a very short comment, and that is a fact that I think it's certainly worthy of taking a look at it, but in its current form, I'd have some real concerns. And that concern would be that if all we're going to require is the landowner's signatures on the application, I believe that we're putting the position, the city in the position of being sued by folks that are, have leases between a landowner and say a cellular tower or any other lease of that property. When you lease property, you're in essence giving up some of your fundamental property rights. And if we require only, if the requirement is to get the signature of that landowner, I can see us getting in a situation similar to what Mr. Skolberstad was getting into, where they refused, and then we end up in a lawsuit because of the fact that whoever the, the lesee was has full rights under that contract. And so although I'm not opposed to taking a looking at, at looking at it, but if we're going to require any signatures, I think it needs to be a combination of landowners and/or any lesees that have property rights. So, any additional comments? Any additional comments? Motion on the floor is for approval. Seeing no further lights, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item seventy-four, please.
Item seventy-four is to request council leadership to set a date for 2012 soccer meeting. Move approval.
We have a motion and second for approval and discussion on that motion. Any discussion? Seeing none. Whoops, okay, let's go to Alderman Ron Kroger.
This might sound kind of dumb, but is this for the soccer committee or for, for the council?
I believe this is actually setting a special, or a meeting for the council. And I would assume, somebody helping here, I would assume is it to the council or to the 2012 committee?
Twenty-twelve committee.
Okay, let's go to Jason Green, city attorney.
It's almost a distinction without a difference. It would be the council sitting as the 2012 committee.
Right, right. But when we advertise it, we have to advertise it as a 2012 committee. Okay. Everyone clear on the motion? Clear as mud? Okay, let's go to Alderwoman Karen Olson.
And in addition, just so for my edification, it, the discussion is going to be on soccer. We are not going to discuss any other projects that are, that are currently in 2012. And I, and I say that only because I want it clear to other organizations that they're not going to have to appear at this meeting and send representatives. And so I want other organizations to know that if they have a 2012 project that is in, in process or still up for consideration, they will not need to be at that meeting because it will not be discussed.
Yep, very good. Motion on the floor is to request council leadership to set a date for a 2012 soccer meeting for, with the 2012 committee. Let's go to Alderman Ron Kroger.
Thank you, Mayor. Could we have a little clarification on what are we gonna do at this meeting? I mean, we've, we've already reproved, approved a request for X amount of dollars for the soccer. What's the meeting for?
I can't tell you. It was, I believe at the request of Alderman Chapman, so, and he's not here tonight.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyfembach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, the reason is the, the committee has, wants some clarity to the soccer, people's role in 2012, what the requirements are for in-kind exchanges or in-kind donations, those types of things. What, they want a clear understanding from the council moving forward, what is expected of them to start drawing funds from the 2012, that money that has been set aside for their program.
Okay, thank you. Everyone clear on the motion? Motion on the floor is to set a special 2012 meeting, and that's to be set by the council leadership. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item number seventy-five.
Item number seventy-five is an update on the Virginia Graham Baker Pool and Spa Safety Act on...
Move to acknowledge?
Swimming pool drains.
Move to acknowledge?
Move to acknowledge.
Do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion and second to acknowledge. Mr. Cole.
Mr. Mayor, city council, if possible, I have a short presentation I'd like to make if it works. Not gonna work.
This is what it looks like when you're swimming at night.
I'll just go ahead and start on the presentation. The Virginia Graham Baker Act is a law that was put into effect December of 2008 by Congress. It virtually says that every swimming pool in the United States, whether it be private, public, and the spa, needs to be checked out. There were 74 reports of circulation entrapment in drains from 1999 to 2007, in public and private. As you can see, the public, there was two deaths and 20 injuries. This law was put into effect to protect the people from entrapment and suction in pool and spa drains. It's enhanced the safety, encouraged the use of layers of protection to reduce child drownings. There's 283 child drownings each year in the United States, younger than five. All pools and spas must be equipped with a new ASME or ANSI compliant drain covers. And that means that a safety valve release system, a suction limited vent system, gravity drainage system, automatic pump shut-off system, or a disabled drain, or another type of system determined by the commission, to be equally effective. Any public pool or spa not open or on December 19th does not need to be in compliance till the day its owner or operator opens the pool. That means our outdoor pools are fine until we open them in June. Are pools closing down? Most have not. Many have around the country. We've had a couple in South Dakota that are closing down because of this law. And again, it tends to be local and state whether they're going to follow up on the act. There's different types of covers for the drains that are being processed and made right now. One of our problems is that most of our drains are custom drains in our pools, so we cannot buy off the rack, so to speak. So, in this law, it allows a PE, a professional engineer, to certify the drains. The problem is that the PEs around the country that have experience in these type of pool facilities are reluctant to put their names on because of ambiguity of the law right now. Safety has always been and will continue to be a paramount concern for us in our Parks and Recreation Department, and we want to comply, but there are obstacles outside of our control that have made it difficult to comply with. As of six months ago, the CPSC staff were still changing the law, so manufacturers did not start making the grates, the drain covers, up until the end of November of this past year. The... We can't even get on the list right now for custom drains because they're still manufacturing the standard drains. We did have a bit of good news. First, what does this mean to Rapid City? If we have to change all of our drain covers, which we have 24 in our swimming pools, it will cost the city somewhere in the neighborhood of $100,000 to $150,000. Multiply that throughout the United States. But the good news is the company who built the swim center has just hired a PE, and they are going to start certifying drains for the pools that they built. So, our swim center, we're hoping to get this guy to come down and certify our drains at the swim center. That will save us probably in the neighborhood of $60-some thousand if we can do that. So, questions?
Let's go to Alderwoman Karen Olson.
Thank you very much, Jerry. I did wonder, if you go back to the early facts, you had said how many youngsters had been... How many people, I guess, had been injured? Then you mentioned drownings. And I just wanted to make it crystal clear, or at least my understanding of this, was that number of drownings in the year is not... Those are not all related to drain-related drownings. Those are children or adults who drain... Who drown in a pool, but not related to drains. It's just... I mean, that's a different number, really. It's pretty appalling. I think it was 800-something, and that's not what we're talking about. So, these are... Most of those are not drowning accidents. Those are still tragic, but not related to drains.
Great.
Is that correct? The other thing I was going to say is, as we move forward, have we conveyed to our congressional delegation our concerns with this legislation? Because I am not suggesting that we should be less safe. We obviously should not, but I would say that this is a very... This reflects what is the word? Maybe not... Maybe an extreme situation, and have we conveyed that? Because obviously, there needs to be some help in doing this, or at least some time to do this. And then I have one more question.
Mr. Cole?
Yes, we have. We have been talking to our legislators in Washington since November of this year. CPSC staff has said this Congress... Congress enacted this law, and they will follow it out. So, they haven't been able to change or slow it down.
Karen?
And my last question is in regard to the builder of our pools. Just to elaborate on that a little bit, is that suggesting that we would not have to change the drains in our pools based on this individual certification, or is that...
I think what he stated was, the only one that they can certify is actually the swim center. So, the swim center, if they have a PE that can certify it, then we may not have to change it. But the other pools, I believe, we're going to have to either find someone else who's willing to. Problem is, most of the PEs will not go out and put their name certifying that it's safe because of liability issues. And Duncan, I hope... I didn't mean to stir your thunder, but is that a fair statement?
It is a fair statement. However, they are looking to see... Water Technologies out of Bismarck are the ones that built Swim Center. And what was it?
Associated.
Oh, I'm sorry. Associated Pools.
Water Tech built our view.
And they will come in, and they're looking about overseeing... Or looking at the rest of them as well, but the pools that they built, they'll definitely look at.
Very good. Let's go to Alderman Ron Weifenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jerry, is there a course or something we could send our PEs to? We have a lot of them here, don't we? That work for us? Work for the city?
I'm going to go to Jason Green. I'm not sure anybody is qualified to actually sign off.
Yeah, my question would be, can we qualify somebody to do it? It seems like it would behoove us to do that. I mean, we could maybe take it out of our travel budget to send one of these people on a trip to...
Let's go to Jason Green, City Attorney.
I suspect it's probably possible to get the training that an engineer would need to do this somewhere. But at the end of the day, it ultimately comes down to the professional judgment of the engineer. So, there's no guarantee that they would ultimately sign off on the drains as they exist. They may decide that they do need some modifications before they could offer their signature. So, you may spend money training someone and may not get the ultimate result you want if their professional judgment is that it doesn't meet the requirements.
Right. And I'm not here for guess and speculation. I thought maybe we could review this, and I think it would be very simple to find out if that's available and if it makes sense. I'm not sure.
Any additional questions?
No, thank you.
Any additional questions? Motion on the floor is to acknowledge. Seeing no additional questions, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item 76, please.
Item 76 is to approve a property tax abatement for Dorales's Katherine Johnson for 2008 in the amount of $171.52. Yield to the floor.
Second.
We have a motion, second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman Lloyd LeCroy.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be abstaining in this motion. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a clarification. At a recent meeting, we discovered that there had actually been a hay lease on this 80 acres that apparently generated... Generates approximately $1,886.03 a year. So, my question is, for the period of time that this abatement is being proposed, was that same proportion of time, did the... Where did those... Where did that revenue go? Because the bottom line is, although this is a small amount we're talking about, if this property was generating some income, although it was small, why would we do an abatement?
Let's go to Jason Greener, City Attorney.
I'm not sure I can answer the question. I don't know where the revenue went. I suspect it probably went to the owners of the property, or the former owners of the property, but I haven't investigated the matter personally, so I can't speak from firsthand knowledge.
Let's go back to Alderman Sam Quaker. You're the fourth, sir.
Yeah, I realize that this is a small amount, but on principle, if this property was generating revenue, although it was a small amount, and that revenue went to the former owner, then certainly the former owner should be... Should have to pay the property taxes. I mean, that seems like a fair conclusion. I think we need to have an answer to that, so I'm going to offer a motion to continue this item for two weeks.
So, we have a substitute motion to continue this item for two weeks. Do we have a second? Okay, we have a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Preston, do you have something?
Just as soon as you'd like to have me follow up with this and see where the funds went for the hay that was cut off.
Let's go with the motion. Let's go with the motion on the floor, and then if that passes, then I would assume yes. If not, then we'll be back to the original motion. So, we'll take the motion up on the floor. Motion on the floor is to continue this item for two weeks. Everyone clear on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Continue this for two weeks, and I assume, Mr. Preston, you can get that information. Okay, very good. Public Works items, number 77, please.
Item number 77 is proposed options for secondary access requirements for commercial uses. Planning Commission recommended no change on this item, and that would be my motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve the recommendation from the Planning Commission for no change. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Number 78, please.
Item number 78 is to approve waiving the requirement to install sidewalks along Elk Vale Road adjacent to the former sidewalk decked out with requirement that prior to council approval, waiver of right to protest assessment has been submitted. I would move this item be continued to April 6th to allow a warp to be signed.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue this to the April 6th council meeting. Discussion on the continuation motion, please. Let's go to Alderwoman Karen Olson.
All rats. I don't want to talk about the continuation motion. I have another question.
That's the motion on the floor. Sorry.
Okay.
Okay, Alderman Ron Weifenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The continuation motion moves this to another time to have a warp? I mean...
The motion on the floor is to continue this to April 6th, so this will be back on our agenda on the April 6th council meeting. And the reason for that is to allow the warp, the waiver of right to protest, to be signed.
Well, I don't even think we've approved waiving the sidewalk. Why would we... Why would we... I mean, why are we... Was jumping the cart in front of the horse?
Let's go to Marcia Elkins. I believe we've taken that up. Marcia?
The committee's recommendation was that sidewalk exception be granted with the condition that prior to council's approval of that this evening, that the waiver of right to protest be signed. As such, that has not happened, and so before you could take up the action that's recommended by the committee, we need to have that waiver of right to protest. So, that's our reason for recommending it be continued out. If that's not your intention, if you don't believe it's appropriate to follow the committee's recommendation, you may want to take other action tonight.
What's your feeling on it, Marcia? Have we done it that way before? I thought that...
Marcia?
Isn't it... I mean, if we approve...
Typically, that has... Is in place. And before we come tonight, that warp's been signed before we place that on the agenda. But because of the timing of this between committee last week and tonight, that warp was not generated and did not get the signature in it in that short three-day period.
Right. I was at the committee. I don't recall that discussion. I recall continuing or moving it forward, but having it not on the consent to... But, and I could be wrong, and I probably am wrong, but I guess it doesn't make sense to have a warp before we even approve whether we're going to allow the sidewalks or not.
Marcia?
I'm confused, and hopefully you can...
My understanding of the motion is that it's as drafted on the agenda, that the committee recommended that you would approve that if you had that warp signed prior to tonight.
Marcia, my concern would be is that when we talked about that at committee, we wanted to make sure that the sidewalks are not... Maybe specifically not going to be on Elk Vale, but behind. And that was part of the demonstration that Mr. Shaffey put forward was the fact that there was going to be other sidewalks, and we wanted to just ensure... I think our intent was to ensure that those other sidewalks went in with this waiver of right to protest. Is there a way that we can... I can add that to the amendment?
Marcia?
The map that Mr. Shaffey presented to you showed additional development that would happen in the area, and that sidewalks would be constructed on those when building permits were proposed for each of those lots. So, he was not proposing that happen now, but just demonstrating it would happen into the future.
Okay, Marcia, because I went out there today, and before I'm able to allow a sidewalk not to go in, I want to have some insurance. There's already a building there with no sidewalk. I mean, there's no sidewalk. And we... I went with Alderman Costello, and as we were driving through the neighborhood, we were making comments about this... You know, we could see through this development and all the industrial park that's going on, that there'll be people walking. And sure enough, right out of the GE building, there come people walking on the street because there's no sidewalks. So, I have an issue with moving this forward with a warp without any assurance that there's going to be a sidewalk around that all-decked-out building. So, I don't know how to ensure that. I just want... I want to put that on the record, so...
Marcia?
Well, again, if your goal is to see that there's a sidewalk installed along Elk Vale Road, then you would want to deny this exception. The parcel that the all-decked-out building is on is going through the subdivision review process, and they will be constructing and required to provide the sidewalk that's down that short stretch of Homestead Street on the southern property boundary of that building. The other portions of roadway throughout the development will come in as building permits are issued. And I would remind you that you changed your rules, and that previously, they were not required in the light industrial developments, such as where the GE building is, but now your rules would require that for future buildings.
Okay. Just a reminder, the motion on the floor is a continuation motion, and so we need to dispense with the continuation motion. If we dispose of the continuation motion, if that motion fails, then we can go back and actually take up item 78 as advertised.
Can I make a substitute motion to continue this without any attachments, just as it is, for a future council meeting?
Say that one more time. I'm trying to follow what you're trying to do. My apologies.
What I'm trying to do is get to the bottom of this, that I sat in the committee meeting, and then we were described the fact that if we were waiving the sidewalk, other sidewalks were going in. I went out there to the site today to look at it, and I'm not willing to waive anybody's sidewalk unless there's an assurance that a sidewalk goes in back there. And I'm not sure how to get to that point, and maybe looking for some assistance.
Marcia, isn't that the intent of the warp, is to assure the sidewalks goes in whenever the council deems it's appropriate?
On Elk Vale Road, yes. I don't believe that's Mr. Weifenbach's concern.
You're right, Marcia. I think I'm confusing apples and oranges here, so I won't support this motion in any way, shape, or form. I mean, that's not what I was told at Public Works.
Okay, Marcia?
Perhaps the best course of action is to go ahead and continue it as has been suggested by staff. That would allow us to visit with Mr. Weifenbach and see if we could get his concerns addressed, or at least make sure that we're comparing apples to apples.
Thank you.
Mr. Weifenbach, you offered a motion. Could you repeat the motion? Because I do need to get a second before we move on.
The motion doesn't make any sense because on the agenda, it doesn't say anything about any warp or anything like that on here. It just says, approve waiving the requirement to install sidewalks.
Okay. So...
Okay. So, I'll just vote against this motion, and I will withdraw my motion, Mr. Mayor.
So, the motion on the floor is to continue this item to the April 6th city council meeting. Okay, everyone clear on that motion? That is the motion on the floor. Let's go to Alderwoman Karen Olson.
To bring clarification to this, I will support the continuation motion.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker. Motion on the floor is to continue this to the April 6th city council meeting. Seeing no further lights, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes with one no from Alderman Weifenbach. Thank you, everyone. Round to bids, Mr. Preston, 79.
Thank you, Mayor. We do have three items on the bid tab today, this evening. First one is six, 2009 Chevy Impalas. We received two bids as listed. Staff is recommending accepting the bid from Rapid Chevrolet Cadillac in an amount of $139,740.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the bid from Rapid Chevrolet for an amount of $139,740. Any discussion on that motion?
Mayor, is that for the police department?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
These are the black and white.
These are the black and white patrol units. And the reason we're going to the Chevy Impalas is the fact that they get a lot better gas mileage and they're front-wheel drive, so they'll get better traction. Right, Chief? Very good. Motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion? If not, seeing, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
The second item we have is the two thousand nine roadway painting projects. We received two bids as listed. Staff is recommending accepting the bid from Traffic Services Company, amount of sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Second. We have a motion, second for approval and discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Third item is miscellaneous improvement projects for two thousand nine which are sidewalks, ADA, SASS, curb and gutter and other improvements in street sections of Rapid City. We received seven bids as listed. Staff is recommending accepting the bid from KRM Concrete LLC in an amount of thirty thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars and sixty-three cents.
Move approval. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you. We had nothing under Mayor's items. We did have an item eighty-one A from Alderman Quaker, an update on utility rebates. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. The council, two weeks ago unanimously passed second reading of the, of the ordinance on rebates. I think there's been some confusion as to when that ordinance takes effect and some, some people have already purchased appliances with the understanding that they would receive a rebate. And I would like to ask our Public Works Director, Robert Ellis, what the impact would be of us making the, making the rebates effective March three, which should be the day after the, the council had approved second reading of the ordinance and if that's something that we could do and what the impact of that would be.
Mr. Ellis?
Second.
I believe the impact of that, you're probably talking five, six hundred dollars. We have received phone calls from a couple of people who thought the ordinance was in place, the rebates were effective immediately. In fact, they're really not effective until March twenty-seventh, which would be twenty days after the publishing. But I think that if we were to accept those applications now, it wouldn't impact the program one bit. We do have one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars budgeted for this program. My guess is we probably have just a handful of people who have actually gone out and purchased these devices.
I would like to make a motion to do that.
Okay, let's go to, I'm gonna go to Jason Green real quick and then we'll come back to you, Sam. Let's go to Jason Green, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. The only authority that I'm aware of that would allow the council to do this is the ordinance itself. The ordinance is not effective as a matter of law until March twenty-seventh, so it would be my opinion, the council doesn't have the legal authority to do, to use the rebate program before the ordinance becomes effective.
Okay, I'm gonna go back to Alderman Quaker, but let me just make a suggestion. Is there anything in the ordinance that specifically states the date on the receipt or does it say that you have to turn a receipt in? And the question I'm asking is if we have a handful of folks that turn a receipt in after the, after the ordinance is effective, in essence, are we still following the, the ordinance?
I can't answer the question on the fly, but I'd be happy to look into it and report back.
Okay. Alderman Quaker, you still have the floor, sir.
So if, if I offer a motion to, to do what I previously wanted to offer a motion to do, would you scream and holler? I mean, would we be able to do this?
Mr. Green?
Well, again, the only legal authority I'm aware of is the ordinance and it's not effective yet. That's, that's my advice.
I'll offer a motion to refer this to the next, Mayor, help me out.
I was gonna say, why don't you, if you would, offer a motion to have this put on the next Legal and Finance Committee meeting to get a report from staff? I think it basically does the same thing and that way we're not, we're not sideways with the ordinance at least yet.
That's my motion.
Do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please just on Legal and Finance for the staff to report back and Jason Green to report back as far as the language within the ordinance. Any discussion on that motion? Yes, sir.
And then a follow-up. What is, what exactly is the date of twenty days beyond date of publication?
It's twenty-seventh, if I'm not mistaken.
So starting the twenty-seventh, unless we can come up with something for.
Yep. Mr. Ellis?
I do have the ordinance here in front of me and anything that references the receipt, it's found right here. It says, "A receipt for, for purchase of the device must be attached to the application form." Doesn't recognize a date that the receipt had to be procured.
So in other words, if someone was to turn in a receipt to you on the thirtieth and even though they bought it on the fifteenth, Jason, would they be, okay, we won't get into, we'll, we'll report back to everyone. How's that? Motion on the floor is to take this to Legal and Finance. Yeah. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Very good. Thank you, everyone. Uh, let's see, we're onto the public comment period on items eighty-two through ninety-seven. Chair, look for motion to open the public hearing on items eighty-two through ninety-seven, please. Do we have a second? We have a motion, second to open the public comment. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. I do not have any speak request forms on items eighty-two through ninety-seven. Does anyone wish to speak to any of the items eighty-two through ninety-seven inclusive? If not, we move on. Just a reminder, we do keep this portion of the agenda open as far as the public comment periods. So we will move on to the continued public hearing consent items eighty-two through eighty-six. Chair would ask if any of those items need to be removed. Marcia?
Okay. Very good. How about from the council? Please turn on your light.
If not, the chair would look for a motion to approve the consent calendar, item eighty-two through eighty-six inclusive, please.
Second.
We have a motion, second to approve the consent calendar, items eighty-two through eighty-six inclusive. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. That does take us to the end of the consent public, uh, hearing consent items. Chair would look for a motion to close the public hearing on items eighty-two through ninety-seven. We have a motion and second, any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. We're onto the consent public hearing items, items eighty-seven through ninety-one. Does anyone wish to have any of these items, eighty-seven through ninety-one inclusive, removed from the consent calendar? Yes, oh, please turn on your light. Seeing none, chair would look for a motion to approve the consent public hearing items, items eighty-seven through ninety-one inclusive.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. That does take us to the end of the consent public hearing calendar. We're onto the non-consent public hearing items, item number ninety-two. And let's see, this is Alderman Quaker, item number ninety-two, please.
Item ninety-two is second reading of ordinance fifty-four ninety, amending seventeen-point-oh-six in municipal code as requested by the city for rezoning from no-use district to low-density residential district located at five oh-one and five eighty-three Valley Drive. Move approval.
Second. We have a motion, second for approval and discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item ninety-three, please.
Item ninety-three is second reading, ordinance fifty-four ninety-one, an ordinance amending seventeen-point-oh-six in municipal code for rezoning within a described property requested by the city from no-use district to general ag district located at four oh, four oh-five Valley Drive. Move approval of second reading.
We have a motion and second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number ninety-four, please.
Item ninety-four, second reading, ordinance fifty-four ninety-two, an ordinance amending seventeen-point-oh-six in municipal code for rezoning from no-use district to general commercial district as requested by the city of Rapid City located at thirty-thirty East Highway forty-four. Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion, second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number ninety-five, please.
Item ninety-five, second reading, ordinance fifty-four ninety-three, an ordinance amending seventeen-point-oh-six of chapter seventeen in municipal code as requested by the city for rezoning from no-use district to public district located north of South Dakota East Highway forty-four and west of Lancer Drive. Move approval with stipulations.
Second. We have a motion, second for approval with stipulations. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderwoman Karen Olson.
This is, is to protect Hawthorne Ditch water quality and the downstream folks on Hawthorne Ditch.
Let's go to Marcia Elkins.
As the heir to the Pennington County Drainage Commission property, yes, it is a ditch area and yes, the intention is by making it public, it would protect it.
Okay. Karen, any things?
I'll be a supportive motion.
Okay. Motion on the floor is for approval with stipulations. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number ninety-six, please.
Item ninety-six is a request by Renner and Associates for peeling and suns for variances subdivision regulations to waive the requirement to install curb, gutter, pavement, sidewalk, conduit, streetlight conduit, water and sewer and to reduce the right-of-way width from fifty-nine to forty feet on the existing access easement per sixteen-point-sixteen